I'd like to.
What if I can't?
It's a really light crowd today.
I'm sure they wanted to come out in this lovely weather.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see it. The crowd is.
Still some, you know, state budget.
Yeah. They aren't gonna do anything until later.
You guys all set?
I am.
We'll call the Water Pollution Control Authority and Regular Town Council meeting to water for Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018 at 7:04 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
I would like to be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Oh, here, I'm sorry.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Viglion.
Here.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
And in a motion to approve the minutes of the Water Pollution Control and Regular Town Council for December 15th, 2017.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the following adjustments to the minutes. I was the one that asked to have it tabled the last time because of a statement on page three. So, I went back and listened to the meeting on YouTube, and so I would just like to clarify the statement. It's page three, one, two, three, four, it's the fifth paragraph. And the statement says there were violations in 2003. I would like that to read, "There were alleged violations in 2003 with no specificity." And then, and then the rest is fine. On page six, item J, paragraph three, uh, his should be is. On page seven, paragraph four, the word "the" should be deleted so that it makes sense. The next paragraph in five where it talks about, um, the signs that I said that they, in, in the past, they were maintained and then the maintenance stopped, we, that's when we were talking about the signs in North Haven, um, that Victor Palma from the Park and Rec Commission, so that it should just, it's not referencing the signs in North Branford, it was in North Haven. On page 10, Lars Seelander, his name is spelled S.E.L.A.N.D.E.R. I'm sorry, could you repeat that? On page, uh, 10, Lars Seelander, it's S.E.L.A.N.D.E.R.
A-N-D-E-R, okay.
Um, and on page 12, item F, paragraph three, the tis, T.I.S. should be this. And then item G, Randy, when it refers to Randy Frank, her name is spelled R.A.N.D.I. So those are the corrections that I have for those minutes. So we just need a second in order to.
Second.
Any other changes?
Yeah, I've got them on page six. Under I, where it says Counselor Rose explained that there was blasting, there should be the word sand in front of it, sandblasting, and it drips over the southern end of town, not drips over the southern end of town.
So do I need a second on that?
No.
No, we'll just include it in the original motion.
Any further changes? Same, then, roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglion.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the December 19th, 2017 Town Council meeting minutes.
Sum up.
Second?
Second.
I'm sorry, my correction's on the 19th, not the first one.
Okay.
So that's page six and it's the same two words, um, sandblasting and drift, it's on the 19th, not the earlier.
It should be drips, not.
Drift.
Drift.
Any further corrections?
Um, actually, Al, I think you were right the first time, I don't see it on page six of the minutes of December 19th. It was on the fifth, wasn't it? Yeah, so you were right the first time.
Oh, okay, then we'll leave that alone. I'm right half the time.
Okay, roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Upstate.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Viglion.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
I will move into the Water Pollution Control Authority agenda. First items correspondence, citizen statements, there's nothing listed. Unfinished business, nothing listed. New business, nothing listed. Citizen statements and petitions under Water Pollution Control Authority, nothing. Move into the Regular Town Council agenda. Reports of board committees, boards and commissions. First is Economic Development Commission.
Report their meeting, uh, Monday, the eighth.
Okay. Park and Rec Commission.
There was no meeting in December.
Police Commission.
Next meeting is the eighth.
Fire Commission, next meeting is Thursday. Board of Education Town Council Communications Subcommittee.
Uh, there was no meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Public Safety Communications Committee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission. East Shore Health District. Uh, next is Town Managers' Report, update on oil tank at Stanley T. Williams Community Center.
Uh, yeah, so I had put a memo together for you just to show, not a memo, but, uh, just to, uh, show you the letter, I've been in communication with the State of Connecticut regarding the, uh, tank and, and closing up that, uh, file, um, and the second phase of that, now that we have the tank in place and connected, um, is to talk to the other division of the, uh, agency, uh, to talk about the process for the tank that's in the ground. So, um, that's something that, uh, I'm talking with, uh, Fran and trying to schedule and, uh, with the state, uh, to see what the process is involved and what application or paperwork that we have to submit in order to get that rolling. So, uh, phase one done, um, Public Works did a great job getting that done, getting it over, tied up, um, so up operational and, uh, we're, now move towards getting the, uh, the tank done.
Next is update on North Branford Intermediate School Roof Project.
Yes, as you know, we, we approved the, um, award for that and we've got the letter on communicating with, uh, the company Perfect Temp out of Plainville and trying to coordinate and get them onsite, uh, and put the work schedule together. I have not heard back from, uh, Bill Chody on the school side yet as to, uh, what he's heard, uh, but that, I should hear from him this week, I hope to hear from him this week and, and definitely have a update for you at the next meeting, but they should, should have a, um, schedule for us pretty soon, get them onsite, get them going. And again, a- as I said before, it's gonna be weather dependent, you know, uh, for this start, uh, start time for, for January.
Did you hear anything from Bill Chody today in regards to an issue at the middle school mail function of some heating equipment that they had to, um, like a burning smell, uh, they had to evacuate, move kids off of a floor or something, so I would.
I did not.
Guess that that has something to do with the work that this company is doing, 'cause it had to do with the, the heating.
I'll look into it, I did not hear from.
Okay.
From Bill today, so, so I'm, I'm not aware of that issue, but I'll make some notes and make sure that that's on my, uh, my sheet for our conversation tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. And that, and that was something that happened to, today?
Today.
This morning, okay.
Okay, next is update on North Branford High School Boiler Project.
Yeah, same, uh, scheduling issue with, uh, getting that, uh, company onsite, um, they are working obviously to, uh, put the design together and simultaneously look at ordering the boilers, so three to four, or I guess, uh, on the work side, on the design side, four to five weeks, but maybe three weeks lead time in terms of ordering the boilers. So, again, that will be on the call sheet with Bill, uh, tomorrow to see if he's heard from them, uh, in terms of a, uh, updated timeline.
Wait, that's not gonna get done this year?
No, uh, well, it'll get done as soon as it can possibly get done, but we're gonna miss most of the heating season for that project, not the whole season, so, um, it's hard to say, but hopefully at the tail end of the, in the heating season, get those up and running.
Well, I, I can report that at one of the Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee meetings, it was in November, they reported that they have a company to rent a boiler, that they already got the cost and everything, so that if the boiler goes down during this heating season, they will bring in a portable boiler, that they will hook up so that they have heat to get through in, until this project is done, and it was a cost of approximately $5,000 a month to rent the boiler, um, to do that. So, they were proactive in that sense that they looked into it to see once, I mean, the the high school is operating on one boiler as it did last winter, um, that they did make it through the heating season last year, they're hoping to get through again this year, but if not, they do have this as a backup, so that they can still have school.
Yeah, I just, and, and on those lines, if I, if I could, just, uh, comment, I'd sent out a, um, communication that obviously we had some issues here at, at Town Hall over the weekend, uh, Public Works did a great job, Fran and, and Ken Ash and, and the crew, uh, were here and they got it resolved, uh, today with a new part in terms of the circulating pump that failed, and then the, uh, lines in the wall failed, froze up and burst in the, uh, building and, uh, engineering section of that corner of the building back there. So as you walk in, you see those, was in the, in the wall, in the building department, uh, so, uh, Ken was able to, uh, mitigate that, uh, he, he was monitoring with Fran over the weekend and, uh, was able to spot that, shut it down, he did some, um, bypassing and relooping, uh, to get the system, uh, to continue to pump warm, uh, water through the rest of the building. So, I think they did a great job in terms of, uh, suppressing the potential damage we could've had, um, so it is, uh, up and operational, it's gonna cost us a few bucks, um, I'd have no idea what the, what the numbers are yet, um, but I think I'll, I, what I'll try to do for the next meeting is get a sense of what, what that cost us, and also, uh, from a storm tracking standpoint, I think you know we had the Christmas, uh, storm, we had the New Year's storm, so we got a lot of overtime in those, uh, pesky little two-inch accumulations that last for hours, um, and it takes just as much salt, uh, to do on two inches, you know, it does for, for other, other, uh, events, weather-related events, storm events, so I'm hoping to have some numbers for you, just to give you a sense of where we're tracking to start it for the next meeting, uh, and try to track that through. I think, I mean, I'm not saying we're, you know, anything to be concerned about at this point, but I just want to know what the numbers are and, and because if, if it continues to trend like this, yeah, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some issues, we, we did a lot of salt, we spread a lot of salt out there.
So, was the heating issue, did it start prior to the holiday weekend?
Yeah, uh, Ken had noticed something, uh, Friday, wa- was on it, was monitoring, was, was trying, and couldn't get the, couldn't get the part, uh, until, until Tuesday morning.
Well, I was just wondering if there was some kind of an alarm, I mean, how did they know over the weekend?
No, no, it just is, one of those things that, you know, on a Friday, happened to hear it, uh, and, and see it, and then, um, was monitoring it through the entire, entire weekend, yeah. No, it could've been a lot worse.
Right, well, that's why I was wondering when.
Undetected, yeah, no.
Right.
Yeah, he was prepared.
Is how they knew about it over the holiday weekend if Town Hall was closed?
No, he happened to come in on Friday and, and told me that he'd be here working throughout, uh, Friday, and then called, you know, just indicated that he couldn't get the right part, was not available and wouldn't be available till this morning, so between him and Fran, they did a, a schedule in terms of they, um, you know, cranked up the heat, opened the doors, tried to get the circulation goop, brought in, uh, space heaters to, uh, to the other rooms and to the section that wasn't getting heat and trying to draw heat to, to the other side, so. Yeah, I think we're fortunate in that sense that it was detected early, um, so unfortunately the part wasn't available.
They did a nice job too, I was here today watching what was going on, they did a nice job, both of them.
All right, next is Community Events and Presentations. We have an announcement from the Governor, re, severe cold weather alert extension. It's extended from January 2nd till January 8th. At the direction of Governor Daniel P. Malloy, the Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, Homeland Security and its partners have invented a severe cold weather protocol to ensure adequate s- shelter space during the cold weather. Protocol is being activated as a result of forecast long duration of arctic cold for our state that could last into next week, which contains single-digit temperatures along with wind chill, temperatures below zero degrees. Current protocol has been extended from January 2nd, 2018 through January 8th to, eight, January 8th, 2018 at 5:00 PM. Governor encourages cities, towns to consider opening warming centers or other facilities to help those in need. In addition, we want to continue to ensure that local centers and other facilities used during cold weather emergencies reach their capacities. There's a single system in place to find out where the space, uh, where there is space so they can be directed, individuals and families accordingly. If you receive a call from someone looking for a shelter and you're not aware of any shelter space, please direct the person to call 211. Department of Emergency Medical and Homeland Security has opened an incident web EOC, severe cold weather, December 26th through January 8th. If your town opens a shelter or warming center, please indicate its status on the web EOC. So if you need in space. That, and also warming centers. The following locations are warming centers for the town in North Branford, North Branford Town Hall, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, Atwater Library in North Branford and Edward Smith Library in North, Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Friday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Stanley T. Williams Community Center in Northford, Monday to Thursday, 5:30 AM to 8:00 PM, Friday, 5:30 to 4:30 PM, Saturday and Sunday, 6:30 AM to 12:00 noon. So those are the warming centers in Northford. That's all I have. Anything else under Community Events and Presentations? Next is Citizen Statements, Petitions and Correspondence.
Good evening, Hank Petrovsky, 3 David Lane. I'm here on behalf of the North Branford Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee. Wanted to give you all an update on the plastic film recycling program that we started a year ago. That's where we offer residents the opportunity to bring all their plastic shopping bags, newspaper sleeves, all of that, to eight lo- convenient locations around town. We assemble that, uh, bag it up, bring it to Big Y, and they ship it off to the Trex Company that goes into making composite decking material. Anyway, if you recall, um, if we collect 500 pounds of this, uh, plastic film in a six-month period, the Trex Company will donate a bench made out of their decking material to the town. In June, um, the School to Work Program up at Tuckahaw Valley Elementary School won the first bench. This time, um, Edward Smith Library won the bench, so they will be ordering that shortly and, uh, hopefully within a month or so, we'll be having a presentation up at Smith Library, so we will certainly let the town manager know if any of you would like to come along with, uh, to, uh, see that presentation. The first year of the program was an outstanding success, we had no idea how this would go over, but we collected 3,200 pounds of plastic film. Now that may not seem like a lot, but one little shopping bag does not weigh much, it takes 40,000 shopping bags to make 500 pounds, so we've collected the equivalent of 240,000 shopping bags in the town the last year, so thank you to all of you that have participated in dropping your plastic film off, uh, the residents, um, so we're looking to continue. You can drop off here at Town Hall, the two libraries, the community center, Country Paint Hardware, Northford Store, TJ's Laundrette, Food Pantry in North Branford, I think I have them all covered. So, again, thank you for your support with the project and hopefully we will continue and you'll see these Trex benches all over town in the next couple of years, thank you.
Thank you.
Hank, so it's, you said for every 500 pounds we collect?
Correct.
So we should have six benches?
No, it's only, doesn't matter how much you collect in.
Alex.
Six-month period, Counselor Woman, it's.
It's just five.
You only get one.
Oh.
So we, in the two, so we collected 1,400 pounds the first half of last year and 1,800 pounds this, uh, I talked to the Trex Company folks today, they said we are by far doing an outstanding, they can't believe how much we collect, neither can we.
So you can get two in a year?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it doesn't matter how much you collect, but the main thing is not going in the trash, 'cause up to this point.
Right, everything was going in the trash.
All this stuff has been going in the trash, so we found a new, new useful way to use this, so, uh, please, again, could keep bringing your plastic film into these locations. Or, if you don't wanna bring it to town, you could bring it to Big Y yourself, or Stop and Shop, or, um, all the big retailers have bins in front of the store, but, uh, we'd appreciate your support here in town, thank you.
Hey Hank, one, one more quick question on, on the, is there a resource, uh, website or somewhere that shows a list of, of this, uh, film? I mean, it's not just, it's not just the shopping bags that we.
That's correct, um, if you go to trex.com, that's the Trex website, and click on recycling, it shows what type of stuff. It's salt bags, so a lot of us in town that have wells, we may use salt, those bags go in there, um, shopping bags, newspaper sleeves, dry cleaning bags, um, bread bags, um, stuff needs to be clean and dry and free of material. Sometimes we get some funky stuff in, in some of the bags and we know right away as soon as we open a bag whether someone threw a piece of fish in there, a piece of chicken, so please, I urge you and the residents in town to not put anything in there other than dry, clear plastic polyethylene, uh, and again, the website will have, and the posters that are by each bin show you what should be in there, so if you stick to that, you really help us out.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else under Citizen Statements, Petitions, Correspondence, Resignation and Appointments? Appointment of council liaisons to following boards and commissions. Versus Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll go on that.
All right, planning.
Do we vote on these or are these just appointed?
They're just appointed. Al, for planning and zoning?
Yep.
Police Commission, Tom Zampiano? Fire Commission is, uh, Bob Viglianti, uh, Bob.
Vig.
Viglion, sorry.
Close my.
And I'd like to stay on there, I can't make them all, but I'm sure Bob can handle it.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
BOE Budget Committee, Rose.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that one.
Marie, you wanna stay on that one? And Marie?
Uh, there was one other one that was Park and Rec.
Yeah, Park and Rec.
Um, George and I were doing a co on that and he told me that he would like, he was gonna step down from Park and Rec, 'cause it's the same night as DTC meetings, but I will stay on Park and Rec.
So you could do Park and Rec? Okay.
And, uh, if I could, I don't know if you thought about, uh, Economic Development, Dan had, uh, Arm, Counselor Arman had that, so there's a vacancy there.
Okay. That's all I have for there. Unfinished business, discussion, action. Approval of, uh, proposed ordinance 2017, Fire Department, is that? Where we sit on that?
Uh, per your review and acceptance, it's, uh, it's ready to go in terms of, Anthony, it's been hanging around for a while, but Anthony cleaned it up in terms of the comments of, for, uh, just a, sort of a streamlined approach to the, to the fees, um, and he's outlining.
Can we get a clean copy of that, so we could vote on it, um, next council meeting?
Sure could.
So you could.
Would you happen to pack it now as a clean copy, wanna fire version and, and the new one?
Yeah, we could just see the changes. How we highlight them.
Well, I, I have some questions on that.
Now's the time to, I, I did too.
I mean, what's, what's our, our motive, um, to, to, um, to have these charges? I mean, are the, are these char, do these charges exist now?
No.
This is a whole new section.
Right, so my question is, you know, we always talk about, you know, the council talks about it, the town talks about it, EDC talks about it, about the, um, the spirit of, of economic development, and although these, these charges don't seem to be of any weight to make or break a, a company or a business, nor are they, uh, weighted to make or break the town, so I, I don't know why we would wanna create that nuisance.
I think it's just an attempt to, uh, to mirror other towns, that is a possibility to cover some of the costs for the fire marshals.
Right, and I, and I kinda thought that, but we're not like every other town, we have no artery to a highway, we don't. You have to actually come into town, and I guess my point would be, is maybe we, we, we aren't like the other towns and we try to make it more friendly, I, you know, that's just, just an opinion. That's what I thought about when I read it. The other thing is, is someone's gotta do the admin on it.
The admin will be handled by what, the fire marshals, Anthony?
Sure, through the building departments and pass rate.
All right, we'll look at it, we'll look at the cleaned up version and then we could vote on it, um, next, next council meeting.
I, I just had a, under the lockbox, the key lockbox, um, section, at, at the very end, it, there's the penalty phase in there, and I believe when we talked about this last year, the cost of a lockbox is somewhere around.
Five hundred dollars.
About $500.
Correct.
Which would be ordered through the Fire Department, or?
No, what happens is, there's a form, we use a company called Knox, we have Knox Boxes in town, there's different vendors out there. Uh, if you're a person putting a business up, we give you the form, you fill out the form, you give us payment, we sign it, has to be signed by an authorized person, we mail it into Knox, they send the box to you, you mount it on the wall where you wanna have it, in coordination with the fire marshal as far as near an access door, things like that. We come in, we use our key, we open it up, put your key in it, lock it and go. So it's a multi-step process. The fire marshal identifies typically on plan reviews that you should have, most people since we, and just, uh, this went in place probably about 2001, we started doing Knox Boxes in town, so everything new since then, you go to Big Y, the, the Rite Aid, the bigger companies, Dollar General, everything since then has Knox Boxes installed. The problem is there's nothing for anything prior to 2001, so this puts teeth to say, okay, we all should have Knox Boxes, so we all have the ability to get in there. We had a situation the other day, it was a, um, a trucking company in the middle of the night, fire alarm was going off, we gotta wait for the owner to come to get into the building, again, in this dangerous weather with the, you know, a pipe bursting, waiting a half hour, an hour, could be a significant amount of damage that could occur, or it could be a fire brewing inside there, or it could be nothing, until you get inside and determine. be nothing, until you get inside and determine what's going on. You're kind of like behind the eight ball.
It's a great idea. Rose, we've used them in Hamilton for years.
I'm not opposed to it. I guess that since, I mean, I know we don't have any ordinance right now on the books, but all new construction, you said, has it in there. So, you're looking at more of the prior construction.
Correct. And plus, the challenge is, there's no teeth. I mean, we make a suggestion to the new owner to say, okay, we really just think you should have a Knox box located here. They could say no.
Right.
Because it's not a requirement. It's not, there's no ordinance to require it.
Right. So, I guess part of mine is the fine, is that it's a hundred dollars per a thirty-day period. So, if you have a small standalone business prior that doesn't have one?
Correct.
They could pay more than double the cost of the Knox box in a year in fines, even though initially we give them a six-month
Window.
Window to get it installed. I, I just think that's a lot of money. I, I mean, I understand having teeth in it. I just think that's a little excessive, especially for some of the smaller businesses. And I understand, I know, like, in a, let's say, the Central Plaza, it would be up, is it up to the owner of the plaza to have a Knox box for however many businesses he has, and the keys have to be labeled? So, it's not the individual businesses, but it would be the owner of the plaza, correct?
Correct. The Twin Lakes Commons is a classic example. We have one Knox box, Twin Lakes Commons, and all those different occupancies have keys. It's like, it's a maze of keys in there. It's ridiculous to go through. But, the problem that we have also is if Jay and Lucy's moved out, let's say?
Right.
And Anis moved in. Well, they changed the locks. You know they changed the locks.
Right.
They didn't change our lock, our key. So, there's that follow-up process that says, okay, now that you've put the Knox box in, you have the keys in there as of today, well tomorrow you change occupancies, you change a tenant, you've got to call us up to put a new key in there. Otherwise, it's a useless system.
Right. The owner of the building-
The owner of the complex has to notify us and say, okay, Jay and Lucy's went out, Anis came in, there's a new key, let's put it in, in the box, and so we'll all be on the same page. But, there's no mechanism to do that currently. Again, it's all just out of the goodness of their heart. They're, they're cooperating with the Fire Department since, again, 2001. But, again, Norfolk Triangle's another classic one, where the, the tenants have changed several times over. And, you know, it's just, our own buildings sometimes, we change locks and don't put new keys in there. So, it's, that whole process needs to be tightened up, and there really is no formal policy in place now. It just kind of puts it all together.
Yeah, I, I mean, I-
The penalty, the penalty, we could certainly work on the penalty. I think that the thought was giving people six months to comply.
Right.
Kind of said, okay, we know it's not going to be a drop dead kind of thing, but six months you should be able to comply. And then, if you want to reduce the penalty, then that's, that's certainly no reason for it to do.
Yeah, I, I guess we could-
It kind of goes back to Councilors and PNA. We don't try to bang the businesses if we don't have to.
Yeah, I just, I just, I mean, this comes out to twelve hundred dollars in a year, which is more than twice the cost of the Knox box. So, I would be looking at either a hundred dollars for every sixty days, or fifty dollars for every thirty days, something. So, that, it's, it's roughly six hundred dollars. It's about the cost of the Knox box, and it's really, that is a year and a half.
Sure.
They get the six months initially from when it's passed, and then the fine goes into effect after the six months on there.
Or you make it not to exceed five hundred dollars a year, or whatever.
Yeah, I, I just think that needs to be revised.
Yeah, if it goes up to five hundred dollars a year, we could buy the Knox box and give it to them.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, this is like your free smoke detector.
Yes.
On, like, D, it states the fire chief shall designate the type of key lockbox system to be implemented within the town.
Yes.
To have the authority to require all structures to use a designated system.
That's because there's different vendors out there?
Yeah, but I was going to say, how, is there going to be a letter sent to the businesses as, as far as to what?
Right. There, and, and the initial theme, going back to Councilors, or Deputy Mayor Angelloni's comment, was, once the fire marshal does an inspection, a plan review, and says, okay, I need this. I then prepare a letter that says, thank you for cooperating. Here's our order sheet. We use either A or B, surface mount or recess mount. So, every box in town is identical. Depends on what stage of construction. If you're able to recess it, it looks a little more aesthetically pleasing to you, or it could be a surface mount. But, there's only two models that we use, surface mount or, or a recess mount. We give the, that to the owner. Again, he fills the form out, gives us his payment information, a check, or his credit card, whatever. Myself or the chief sign off on it, mail it into Knox. They mail the check back to the company. They install it with our guidance, where to put it. We put the key in, lock the door, and go.
And now, like, you know, the, our facility, for instance, we have buildings spread out kind of everywhere. It would still be one Knox box?
Right.
For all the-
For the complex.
Buildings, even though they have different, I think, keys to each building?
Yep.
So, they would just be labeled?
Exactly.
For each building?
Each ring would have, you know, this is the field house, this is whatever the case happens, the dome, whatever happens to be in your facility. And then, we just, you know, wherever the alarm or situation happened to be going on, we would use that key to get in. And the owners-
Go ahead.
And, and the owners identified as well. So, you know, it's not that we call you, we don't go into your place, you know, willy-nilly and say, there, there's a notification process that, owners obviously notified from the, from the get-go, but while they get there, you know, it's all notifications. It's all, it's all, and to open the Knox box on the fire apparatus, there's a push-button tone that our dispatcher has to push over the airwaves, so it's all documented. Then, okay, at, you know, seven-thirty-seven, they push the tone on Engine One's Knox box, opened it up, they went in the building, and put out the problem.
They save a lot of damage.
Well, that, that's, that's the downside. You're either sitting there waiting for a half hour for the guy to come, two o'clock in the morning, you're breaking his door down, and see, it's nothing.
Right.
So, it's that peace of mind, you know, a lot can happen in the time you're waiting, so.
Sometimes you've got something going on in the building you can't see in the window.
Right.
You're just waiting for someone to show up, maybe coming from Seymour or somewhere. It's going to take them half, forty-five minutes, maybe an hour to get here.
Correct.
So, it makes a, it makes a big difference.
It's a judgment call. Do you, do you risk knocking the door down and causing thousands of dollars of damage to find out it's just a bad head?
Right.
Or do you, you know, wait for the guy to come? And so, it's, it's that, you know, decision process. I'm sorry.
How, how many businesses, do you have any idea how many businesses will be affected by this?
Uh, not off the top of my head, no, I do not. I do not.
Because I'm just thinking, at five hundred dollars a pop, if, if there's a hundred of us in town that are going to get notified of this, that's a lot of money, at five hundred dollars a pop. And so, I'm wondering, do, you know, would we be, would we serve the businesses better if the town said, hey, uh, you know, like, maybe we should identify how many there are. Is there seventy-five? Is there a hundred? Is there five hundred? I don't know. And then, can we buy better by buying a hundred of them than the five hundred dollars a pop?
It's an individual purchase, and I, I would be, if I was a person that bought it in 2004 or '05 and had to pay full boat myself, now you're giving this guy a better deal than you gave, than you made me buy. There might be some disparity there. Everybody else from 2001 to today has paid their own way.
Well, they could buy a new one at the cheaper cost.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, it's an individual form you fill out.
I, I'd put them on almost every house I built. But, that's only because we have, like, thirty thousand dollar front doors.
Yeah.
And they don't-
You're right. You could do a lot of damage, costly damage.
This is like, you know, they work well, and they're certainly secure, and, you know, and like I said, I've been putting them on for twenty years.
Do you do the surface mount or the recess mount typically?
A lot of them we do, um, surface mount.
Surface mount?
Yep. Because normally, you know, their insurance, because a lot of times their insurance says, you know, you need, you know, so they're going on after the fact. But, they're not, they don't look bad.
No. There's even some, I think, at the auditorium, we, it's actually wired to the alarm system. So, when you open the door, it triggers the alarm. So, you can't be, you know, fortunately going in there.
And we have some that, that go on the, like, on a gate to the, to the access. So, when they, and those ones, when the door is opened on the Knox box, the gate opens.
Oh, wow.
You know, there's a trigger switch in there.
Yeah, that's pretty slick.
Because otherwise, you're sitting out there, okay, do I wreck this hundred thousand dollar gate?
Yeah.
Or do I, do we run the truck through it, or?
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, so we're going to leave it at individual cost.
On F, what?
Forty dash ten F, you mean?
Uh, let's see. F, the fire chief shall be authorized to implement rules, regulations with use of the lockbox system to find the process that building owners must follow.
That goes back to what I was speaking with Councilor Angelloni about, as far as if you had changed your tenant, calls up, you know, come back, open the box, put a new key in there, that whole process that never was identified from day one, it kind of, we've been kind of, you know, working just based on voluntary compliance with, with the business owners, and this kind of will define everything and the process again about changing occupancies. That, that's the main problem that we have, is that tenants change, locks change, but the lock that we have, the key we have locked up never gets changed. So, it's kind of a useless key at that point to us.
Yeah, because it, and then on A, it does say, the fire chief shall require the installation of a key box in an accessible location on each building or cluster of buildings identified or to allow the fire department access. So, I was just curious, you know, like, in our situation where we have lower buildings, I'll say, like, Woffa-Tuckahoe, and then we have Woffa-Rude80, so you probably need more than-
You probably need one on the Tuckahoe roadside and one on the Route 80. The Sportsplex Complex versus Taconacquire, you probably would need one on each of those, because that'd be not practical to go from one to the other.
Right, exactly. And then they're going to basically identify the location.
Correct. In the case of, like, buildings, we try to put them by the door where the fire alarm panel is, or any kind of sprinkler system, things like that. We want to be able to get into that right, right, quick as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, are you a public hearing status of fifteen ninety-nine, Foxon Road?
No material. That's just, it's from a previous meeting that's just been kicking around. That issue's been tabled for some time. Whenever you'd like to take that off the table and decide you want to debate, and decide where you want to go. There's no new additional information. It's just what I've passed on from previous meetings with respect to the hearings we've been through and comments and so forth. Pleasure of the council.
The comments were pretty well split on that. All right, next is future budget planning initiative?
Just an open item. I had nothing prepared for that. If there's anything specific, be happy to look into.
Okay.
So, so what's the status on the insurance, the health insurance? It's January now, so Anthem will talk now?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, that was, that was what was told us last meeting, that we had to wait till January. So, now we're in January. So.
We eat a horse for water, but you can't make them drink. We're trying our best. There's things outside of our control.
Well, that, well, that's just with Anthem, but what about the plan with North Haven, the state plan?
That's the North Haven, the collaborative.
The January holdup was the collaborative with the ACES collaborative. And again, I met, I think Mike mentioned last meeting, I had met a week or so ago with Don and the agent from Brown and Brown that handles that plan. And this coming June thirty, or the July first, East Haven is going on to that plan. There's another town, I forget what I was. I'd be lying to you.
So, this is open to the twenty-six towns that are part of the ACES?
Correct, correct. And when I asked the woman, she said, if it's so, you know, good, why aren't the other, you know, twenty-odd towns going on? And she said, most of them are in contracts where it's locked in for a two-year duration. We happen to be in a good spot where our terms, our contracts are all up, and we can make any kind of changes. And quite honestly, there's no change that needs to be made. It's all just the admin fees you're going to save on. It's, the plan change doesn't need to change at all. You can keep your PPO plan. You can go to a deductible health plan with an HSA. Whatever you plan, whatever you choose to do, that's separate from the issue of going to collaborative. Collaborative basically just saves you on the administrative costs, because it's on a bigger pool of numbers. And that's the same logic that the state has with the, the partnership plan, is that, you know, not only is it the two-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand state employees, but there's twenty-eight thousand of these people in the partnership plan. The problem with the partnership plan is that it's one blanket rate across the entire state.
Well, and it, and it is changed. It's not keeping your insurance. It's going to a different carrier.
Different carrier, exactly. And the, the problem that people outside of the partnership see is that the reason why the majority of the towns that are in the partnership plan are your Fairfield County Gold Coast towns, is because everything is so much more expensive down there. They're saving a ton of money by paying a cheaper premium than they would pay on their own. And then, that leads to the whole viability of the whole plan going forward. If, if the Fairfield County doctors charge X amount of dollars more than a New Haven doctor, let's say, would charge, how long can the plan sustain that additional liability of cost without charging their premiums more? So, the goal they have is one uniform premium across the entire state. Well, the only town that's not really Gold Coast that's in it is East Hampton, who I spoke to the finance director, and he's very happy with it. And there was no opposition, everything went pretty smooth. But, aside from East Hampton, all your towns in the Fairfield County are the ones that are in it. So, obviously, there's cost savings to them because of, and the cost of medical care is expensive in Fairfield County compared to other counties of the state. And that leads to the whole viability of that plan. One person I spoke to at a meeting recently said they don't see it even being around in three years, because it's going to be drained so much from the Fairfield County cost, the benefit they're getting down there, that it's going to deplete the whole assets of the plan. Whether that's true or not, or that's just their opinion, obviously. But, so, I think the, the course of least resistance to us is the, is the partnership plan. I'm sorry, is the-
ACES.
ACES collaborative, because it's basically our same plan with a change of the admin cost, a savings of the admin cost. So, it'd be little disruption to the employees. The next step would be the, maybe the state plan as an option, or going to a deductible health plan, the HSA model. Again, the problem with that is that over time, those savings that were initially in place with the HDHP plans has eroded. There's not a big save between the two, two philosophies, the PPO or the HDHP. So, again, there's no right or wrong answer, basically. So, we are going to meet, Mike's working with the ASME rep to get that body together, the, the negotiating team from each of the different locals. Have one meeting in this room, administrators, representatives, so everybody hears it all at one time. And she's going to, you know, go walk through the PPO, the HSA model. This is what's different from where you are today, if we do go to an HSA. A lot of it's education, obviously. Like I said, last year, we kind of got a late start on it. The whole process kind of dragged on. So, hopefully, we can get ahead of it and have it in place for the budget if we do make any changes for, you know, that March-April timeframe.
But, how many towns really are in the partnership plan, though, total?
Uh, I don't have the list. There's quite a few.
It was in our last, in the last packet, there was a whole list.
Yeah, they've, they've gotten a lot. And, and again, it's, majority of it is the Greenwich, Stanford, Monroe, you know, that neighborhood, neighborhood where it's very well-to-do. And the, the spin on it is, okay, well, if you're having one uniform rate across the entire state, and your healthcare costs are so much more expensive in Fairfield County, well, it's a home run for them. They're paying this one uniform rate that everybody in, in North Branford would be paying. They're having a higher, you know, cost. So, they're saving a lot more money than the rest of the state would. And again, this other person I was speaking to said that leads to the whole viability of the whole plan. How long, how much longer can, can that plan be subsidized by, you know, a lot of these smaller towns, and it's ones and twos, except for East Hampton, that are funding the Fairfield County medical expenses, which are, are significant? So, we're, we're meeting on it, and it's just a matter of getting all the, all the players together, and-
So, the, the problem about leading a horse to water, but you can't make them drink?
Is the whole, is the whole, is the ACES collaborative. She wouldn't talk to us because she was told by Anthem that they were not settled until they have a Hartford Hospital dispute going on, and they don't want to give out rates for next July until the Hartford Hospital thing gets this, gets resolved, which supposedly it's been resolved. That, that's the whole, it's, she couldn't get rates from Anthem, because Anthem's telling her that they have too much uncertainty, and then we can't, you know, go forward until we know what the rates are going to be for the collaborative. Maybe it's not a huge savings for us. I don't know. We haven't seen the rates yet.
Okay, and, and so the other piece, so the ACES is one piece. The other piece is working with our own, with, I forgot.
Seeger and Seeger.
Seeger and Seeger, HD Seeger.
HD Seeger, I'm sorry, yeah.
With Anthem?
Correct.
About our own current rates on, which is a PPO plan versus an HSA plan. So, that's an altern, that's another alternative.
So, you, you stay where you are, do nothing. You stay where you are with the ACES. You go to an HDHP with an HSA, or you go to the state plan. There's basically four different paths you can go down at this point.
Okay, so can HD Seeger get the piece of, the, the two pieces?
Right. As part, she's going to come in and do the presentation to the union groups and walk through the mechanics of it, to make sure there's no questions about the mechanics of how the whole thing will change from where we are today to the new world.
Is it the same person that gave the presentations to the Board of Ed?
Uh, Nancy?
I forgot her name, but-
Yeah, if it's, if it's a girl, that's Nancy, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I, I imagine she'll bring Scott. Scott was before you guys, too, from Anthem last year, Scott Malaya. He'll probably be, I guess, they come in tandem.
They do, but she does all the talking, and I will tell, I've sat through a number of those presentations, and I was not impressed, because she was here before the council, and a number of the council people were not impressed by them. So, maybe she improved her game for this year. One can only hope.
They, they've also, after that comment was made, I did go back to her, her boss who we've had a relationship with for a hundred years, and mentioned that to him. And he has brought additional folks on who are more polished, if you will, in the presentation mode. So, I think- So I think when the time comes, he's going to bring them in as well.
Okay.
So we can invite you guys when the time comes to, we get the firm dates to have you listen to it and see.
Mike, before we just run on the budget planning initiative, um, I think possibly we should have maybe a little further discussion on, you know, the expectation of the council as far as going forward. Maybe give Mike some ideas of what to look at as far as, you know, upcoming budget, you know? I don't know if we should.
Yeah, um, in terms of maybe the next meeting, or we can do it now if you like, uh, this is, you know, I'm open to, uh, certainly having an idea of where I think we should land. But, uh, or if any specific, or we can put it on for the sixteenth meeting, uh, to discuss and give you some time to generate some thoughts for meeting on the sixteenth.
Mike, so going forward with the budget process, I'm assuming that, um, you must work with the department heads and, and get preliminary budgets put together as we move forward. Because I mean, before you know it, it's going to be-
Yeah, I-
March-April.
Yes, um, so they're already engaged and working on those, uh, budget process right now. And I, I've, um, given them instructions to have that ready and, and, uh, targeting the end of the month. Uh, to start looking at that, yeah, to, for them to submit and, and begin to review that. Yeah, um, you know.
Can we get an update as to what the final bu, state budget, what impact that had on us compared to where we ended up with our budget last year? And exactly what that means, like, is there any money left over? Where's it going? Are we okay?
What deficit are we carrying into, what debt load are we carrying into next year?
Uh, well, I don't know the numbers in front of me, but if I recall, we were, um, about seven hundred thousand to the good after the holdbacks. Let me see if I can find it quick. Um, I'll look at what we're talking. And, uh, figuring we took about three hundred thousand dollars extra out of the fund balance. We take three fifty, we took seven fifty this year. Took that three hundred thousand out. Leaves you about four hundred thousand dollars you could apply towards next year's capital as a one-time injection of capital money. So you don't have a recurring hole the following year. So that, that'll be helpful on top of the state pro, money that we get to take state grants, we could get, uh-
Well, the other thing is our contingency is huge, uh, uh, in our budget. I mean, the last time we did a contingency transfer, we had four hundred and some thousand in contingency.
Right.
It showed that as a balance, which just seems like an exorbitant amount. We've never had.
No, I've done a-
It's usually been like a hundred twenty-five.
That was a budgetary consideration because we didn't know what was going to happen with the education reimbursement. And we put it in there as a fund to be available if it was needed with the hope that we would never have to tap into that.
So we would, so we would have, that, that would be extra to go back into-
Yeah, but contrary to what Anthony just said, I thought we were reimbursing the, uh, fund balance for the excess amount we took out.
Correct. So if we have, we're seven hundred to the good, state numbers versus our budget, and we put three hundred thousand back into the piggy bank-
Okay.
To bring us back to that same three fifty level, that brings us four hundred and change. We could move forward to next year's capital improvements.
But that, that's just from the state that, that has nothing to do with contingency, correct?
You are, you are correct, yeah.
So then we would have excess in contingency also-
Which we didn't need.
To, to move forward if we-
Or move back to the fund balance.
Right.
Additional fund balance.
I mean, that's where it would have to go anyway initially.
We probably need to move that, keep moving that up if we ever want to get out of the bad list with our bonding.
Yeah. All right. Why don't we just move on a little bit? The four oh one A and four fifty-seven plans, section of fiduciary, selection of fiduciary. Is that you, Mike?
Yeah, and, and Anthony had been working on this as well. I think he mentioned it at the last meeting, uh, and I didn't have the contract, uh, for the packet, uh, in time for, for the Dropbox. But, uh, I was able to get it to our town attorney to take a look at that. As Anthony had mentioned, and he also should have a prepared motion. Do you have a copy of the prepared motion?
Yeah, we got it.
So that it kind of explains in, in a summary, um, what, what we're trying to accomplish in terms of fiduciary responsibility, um, which I think Anthony was clear that, um, the last meeting, this is going to be funded out of the savings from the, the plan and not from the town or the participants. So the participants in the plan will actually see a savings and, um, will have a fiduciary, uh, responsi, party to oversee this, uh, four fifty, uh, four fifty-seven and the four oh one plan.
Is this a requirement?
It, it's, I don't think it, believe it's a requirement now. It is in the private sector, but not, not for us.
It's a safety gap. There's, there's liability, there's been lawsuits about, against employers who haven't done the fiduciary responsibility properly. Again, if you turn back the time, the, the defined benefit style pension, the risk was borne by the town. The employees basically had a set amount. They worked so many years for this. In the defined contribution plan, the responsibility is put on the employee. And there's a reduced, uh, respons, fiduciary responsibility the town has to make sure that we're educating those employees. A, giving them the proper type of investments, managing the fees, the whole nine yards. So, um, Mike, we just need to be quickly, I wanted to-
But it, but isn't that typically the fund that you go into? Like, so for instance, if you went into Vanguard?
No. No. It says, under a participant-directed defined contribution plan, much of the control responsibility of participant investment outcomes is shifted from the plan sponsor to the participant. The plan, the plan sponsor, again, us, who remains fully and solely responsible for maintaining the plan, meeting regulatory requirements, educating participants, prudently selecting and monitoring both investment options and certain service providers, and controlling plan expenses. So what this company's going to do for us is they're going to be the intermediate between the town of North Branford employees, will probably make a subcommittee of, of, a new investment committee, if you will, and ICMA. It's okay, gee, for the, um, large cap stocks, you have the Kurt Weiss fund. We don't like the Kurt Weiss fund. We want the Lauren Monroe fund. Bring that in so our employees can access that money. So it's an outside part, party looking at it, saying, what's best for the employees, looking at the fee structure that ICMA is charging us, reducing that. They've had very successful negotiations with ICMA to reduce the fee structure. And again, as, as Mike mentioned, their ca, their fee comes out of those savings. So it's not costing the town any money. It's reducing our fiduciary responsibility, giving the employees a little more investment options to, to pick from, maybe better suited for their investment plans. Having some, uh, currently we have, the man comes in on a quarterly basis, the man from ICMA, sets up in the office down there, makes appointments all afternoon. But folks that work in the outside buildings can't come here during the day typically. So this forum will have some supper time meetings, after hour meetings. Want to bring your spouse? You want to hear the whole thing? Talk about maybe, um, social security as an issue, you know, things that are, are relevant to our population, planning for the future, that sort of thing, that are current, we're currently lacking. And this will kind of fill that void for us and relieve some of our fiduciary responsibility, fiduciary risk for being sued.
Is there a frequency for it? For instance, annually, biannually?
I think, uh, every six months, I believe he said, he was going to come in, yeah. Russ will come in quarterly, the ICMA rep, and these folks come in, uh, twice a year. But initially it's going to be, there's a lot, they're going to be creating an investment policy statement, creating this, this subcommittee amongst the employees that they'll recommend that, recommend to the, uh, this group that, okay, we need to replace this fund with that fund, kind of thing. Do you want to go on to that? If the, this committee says yes, then they'll go to ICMA and say, we want to bring in this fund into the stable of, of investments, give people the option to invest that, or they can stay where they are. That's just a matter of another person trying to mitigate our, our, our risk by having this other person come in and, and look at it with an independent eye. You're kind of, with ICMA, you're kind of locked into their, their funds, their own vantage point funds, but maybe it's not the best deal. There's maybe different cost structure, different fees we can get by bringing in Vanguard or other folks that we don't currently have access to.
What happens if, um, Kurt Weiss can't make the meeting and then he loses all his money?
Eats beans.
No, seriously, I mean, I mean, is it a requirement? Is it a voluntary?
Oh, it's all voluntary. It's all voluntary. You're just making it, you're making it available.
Right.
It's all, it's all the town can do. We can't-
From a legal standpoint, is, I'm assuming is, is, uh, it helps us.
Correct. Yes, that's, it's, it's designed to mitigate our risk.
Right, okay.
We have a liability out there and a risk that people can sue us, saying we're not educating folks. I mean, council floor, I can tell you, we have experts working for us that aren't doing our darn good job. So how do you expect a guy who's with no formal education, making decisions for his, you know, his family's, you know, retirement? So the more we can educate the folks, the better. That's all, that's all it's seen as, another set of eyes. Do we have the right investments? Are we paying the right fees and educating the employees to make the right decisions?
So you said there would be a separate committee made up of-
Probably, yeah.
Representatives from the various groups?
Probably, yeah.
And then, so then it's whatever decision they have of, of negotiate, or bringing in other funds or whatever, is just made available to the employees and they can do what they want with it?
You are correct.
Okay.
You are correct.
So Anthony.
Yes, sir.
Getting back to your, you know, our professional people, so, and you know, I've heard all kinds of numbers this year, but like the average four oh one, you know, group, you know, some, some, some people are saying eleven percent. Our professional guy did point twenty-six percent. So I'm having a hard time wanting to pay somebody when if you just left it alone, you did a lot better.
Well, that, that, you're reinforcing my argument. If, if the, if the professional guy is doing point twenty-six, right, and we know that to be fact.
Yeah.
How do we expect Anthony, who's a layperson?
Because everybody else that just kind of let their four oh one sit there made eleven percent last year.
Assuming, assuming they were invested the right way. Maybe I, I was-
Maybe they invested the way our professional did.
Maybe. You're a hundred percent right.
Okay.
So how, he'll, he'll look at everybody's plan and say, no, Anthony, you're, you're fifty-six years old. You should be invested in X, Y, Z. Or you're not looking at the right retirement date. Maybe you're too conservative, you're too risky. So you're a hundred percent right. He's, he's an independent person looking at everybody's plan, saying, this is where I, I think you should be. Do you want to follow recommendation or not?
Fee comes out of the plan.
Correct.
It's not tax dollars.
You are correct.
Okay.
And it's, and the employee is not paying it because the fees they were paying on the plan are reduced and they're getting this extra service.
You are also correct.
All right.
They're, they're paying it.
Well, the-
They're not paying maybe as much because this guy negotiates a better deal, but their plan is being hit for some of these fees.
Right, but the, the cost of the service this company is going to provide is not in addition to the fees that-
It depends on the plan. Some plans have, they have varying layers of administrative fees. So there's no simple answer to that question.
Right, I think, I think, to go to your point, I think the, the hope would be he brings value in so that you're going to increase your return and, and lower your fees. So that you're going to see not only a savings from his negotiating with ICMA, but maybe based on his asset choice and his negotiation skills, you'll see a better net reserve in your own plan as well. So it could be a double benefit to the, the employees. Again, you don't, you don't know until you, until you, you know, do some tracking it out and costing it out. But that, that's the hope, let's put it that way.
But if, well, hold on a second, but if the pension plan, as Al described it, made twen, uh, point two-six percent.
Correct.
Are we happy with that?
No.
I don't know.
Right.
That's a separate conversation.
I, I, right, and, and so let's talk about that for a second. So what are we doing about that?
Uh, well, we're-
Is there anything we can do about it, I guess, as far as going forward?
Yeah, there's something we could do. We, I, I was looking to, um, I was researching the state pension plan. Uh, the state has a very robust pension plan and my initial read on it was that it was going to be beneficial to us. And looking at it more closely, it's not going to be beneficial to us. Because we have the significant unfunded liability has to come along with us. And there's a, their plan is a lot richer than our plan. So the ongoing cost would be a little bit more, uh, greater. So that is not an option. So pension may has got to meet probably in the next month or so to figure out what the course of action is going to be.
Okay.
But any, is it any changes to the pension plan, whatever the pension committee?
It's only an advisory rule. That's come back to the council.
It has to come back to the council.
It's too significant a decision not to be made at this stage.
Right.
Yeah, it shouldn't be made by the pension.
Which it does.
Right.
It, it, it has always come back to the council.
Right.
Right, okay.
So the pension committee brings back to the council any changes that are recommended.
Okay.
Correct. So since we're on pensions and stuff, at a, at a future meeting, um, and maybe this would fall under the budget planning. I, I think that we need to look at the fire services pension, um, because I think we went, so that's like a defined benefit?
Correct.
Right, so, and somehow, and I was part of it, somehow we implemented that when, when, you know, like towns were running from that. So I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't look at that and see somehow if it could be a four oh one or some other type of pension that is a little more controllable. Because it's, it's, it's grown quite a bit from its inception.
Correct.
And then with the multiplier, and the multiplier seems to keep going up, it gets, uh, it's turned into a pretty expensive pension every year. Um, so I think-
Well, there also is a four oh one on the pension as well, on the fireside as well. For the annual, the volunteer firemen get, volunteer firemen get two different benefits. There's the benefit for the pension plan. That's, there's a set criteria that you have to make to get a year of qualified service. If you make that, that year of service, not only do you get a year of credited service in the pension, you get a stipend of a thousand twenty dollars annually. You can either take that as cash today as a payroll check, or you can take it as a four oh one A investment. So about half the population over here takes it as cash today and half invest it in a four oh one A pension plan. So volunteer firemen basically have two pots, if you wanted to, have two pots going, the defined benefit pension you're talking about, and a four oh one A plan over here, uh, that they want to do. I think, I, I, I can appreciate your comment about the, the cost has changed, anything else. I think still if you look at comparable overall fire budgets, all things considered, compared to the towns that have paid departments, accommodation departments, you'd see it's still a significant savings to the overall taxpayers.
Anthony, on this one, if somebody decides they don't want to sign up.
For?
For this plan, the investment, you know?
Yes.
Is there a form they have to sign, like, you know, with insurance that they don't want?
Yeah. It's, it's just basically education. It's just, we're going to have, we're going to have a, a session at five o'clock next Wednesday night about Medicare replanning. Do you want to come? Come. You don't want to come? Stay home, you know? It's just a matter of making it more available to the people to try to reduce our responsibility and our, our risk.
So as long as you're offering it?
That's the key. We're, we're doing our part to make it available to the employees. Again, you can lead a horse to water, you can't make him drink. You can have all the sessions you want. They don't want to come, you know? Then they retire with two dollars to their name. You can say, well, you didn't, you didn't come, you didn't take advantage of our advice, you know?
All right, we have a suggested motion.
Actually, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
For, uh, this, uh, contract was forwarded to me for review earlier this afternoon. I did have an opportunity to take a look at it. However, I do have some concerns that I would caution or at least like to let the body be aware of before you take any action.
You need time to, uh, put it in writing or put it in the motion?
Well, I, I don't, let me articulate my concerns and then you can decide whether or not you want to take any action this year. You know, there, there are a couple of, uh, simple mistakes, like for example, the effective date should be twenty eighteen, not twenty seventeen. Uh, I'm not as concerned about that. My concern is if the goal of the, of the town is to avoid or to mitigate or minimize its own responsibility and or liability to the plan participants. This contract has what's generally known as a hedge clause in it and which a lot of investment advisors will use to limit their liability. If you look specifically at section nine limitation on liability, uh, I want to draw your attention to paragraph nine B. This is what is generally referred to as a hedge clause, basically saying that the advisor is not going to be responsible for, uh, much of anything beyond gross negligence. It is-
Vin, are you on page five, sorry?
Yeah, page five.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do see it.
Nine B.
Nine B.
It's, uh, paragraph nine B on page five. So if, if you look there, they are saying, hey, in order for us to be liable, we, we must, uh, have committed gross negligence as opposed to just simple negligence. Or have willful misconduct on, uh, their part, but they're not going to be liable for any action taken, suffered or omitted by, uh, it, or for any error in judgment made in its performance. So, you know, again, a lot of this is going to be investment advisement and so to people who are generally not sophisticated, meaning most of us are not sophisticated, uh, myself included. myself included, when it comes to making these investments. That's why we have these advisors. And these types of clauses seek to limit the liability of the advisor and maintain the liability on the part of the client. The town is the client in this situation. So my, what I'd like to do is have an opportunity to talk with, speak with staff, go through the agreement, and then maybe talk with the investment advisor to raise these concerns because if what we are trying to accomplish cannot be accomplished through this relationship, then we may have to go elsewhere. But, you know, there was an informal opinion that was written back in 2007 out of the SEC's Chief Legal Office where they specifically were asked to opine on whether or not a similar hedge clause would be something that the SEC would avoid an enforcement proceeding against under the, under the act which is referenced in the agreement. It's the Investment Advisors Act of 1940, specifically Sections 206.1 and 206.2, which gives the SEC the right to bring an enforcement proceeding against an advisor, an advisory body like this entity for poor advice. So generally, you know, the SEC will go after entities that give advice to unsophisticated investors who shouldn't be making investments like recommended. And while I have no reason to believe that that would happen in this instance, if it did, we would want the certainty that the town is not going to be looked to as the pot, but rather the investment advisor is. And I don't think this gets us to where we want to be in my afternoon reading. Although I will say it is not uncustomary in its present form. I've seen these in other municipalities, some of them, and they haven't had any issues. I just think that if you are going in this direction, you should make a fully informed decision on the risks and responsibilities going forward.
All right, then we'll kick it back to staff to look it over and come back when you'll have it refined.
And just so everyone's aware, we have not had the opportunity to communicate on this because we've only received a second.
Okay.
Before we move off unfinished business, Mike?
Yep.
I just wanted to just talk about it briefly and then see if anyone agreed or disagreed. But I think that in the future, Michael, we should be carrying the unfinished, under unfinished business, the Board of Ed, you know, the Board of Ed's rules of procedure and policy until they get back to us on how they corrected what we pointed out to them was wrong. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Well, it was because the superintendents, we had taken the vote in September about the superintendent's contract and sending it to state attorney's office or whatever, but then, you know, we kicked it back to the Board of Ed and reserved the right. So I think it just needs to remain on here until we take whatever action. If it's, if we dismiss it, then fine, then it comes off.
But carry on the agenda.
But carry it until some decision is made on it, I think. And the other thing under unfinished business, which we voted on in November, was the, when the high school cross-country team came before us about the naming of the Floyd Purness, you know, the course or whatever, and we formed a committee made up of Tom and myself and Sarah and Shawna and Jarrett Jamison. And then you were going to reach out to someone from the Auger family also to be part of that committee. And I just think we need to move, you know, I don't know who that person is so that we can set a date for a meeting.
Might be one of the Augers or New Biggs or something like that.
I just don't know who it is, but I think we need to move so that we can have a decision before it, just we lose time on it.
Sure.
So that we can at least form.
Yeah, and it's you and Tom?
Tom and I from the council. It was Sarah Queerfield and Shawna Holzer from the Board of Ed. Jarrett Jamison is the student rep, he's the person that spoke. And then we were going to have someone from the family, the Auger family, I thought, or whoever, I guess, owns the property. Just so that we can get our first meeting, once we have that name, we can get our first meeting set. Hold on a minute.
Yeah. I'll coordinate that and we'll get some rooms available for you to meet here or wherever you decide you want to meet. All right, see, and then, nothing else, we'll move into new business discussion and action review with ethics ordinance.
The town manager and I had discussed this, this had been raised previously under the concept of whether or not we would have a, kind of a code of conduct as a separate ordinance. And I thought that there could potential, potentially be the risk of ambiguity as to, A, what is controlling? And I think the best practice would be to look at your ethics code and say, look to it and say, what's wrong with it? What is it missing? So before we went, before we went too deep into it on my end, I wanted to just hear from the body of what were the, what are the concerns, the ethical concerns that you feel need to be addressed? So then I can put something in a draft mode for presentation. So I suggested that we basically just put forth before the body the code of ethics and say, you know, are there specific areas, whether it be conflicts of interest, whether it be how a person carries themselves in a public forum, whether it be at a public meeting or outside of a public meeting? What are the concerns that need to be addressed? So that we then can fashion either an amendment to the code or some other action if appropriate. But having a separate code of conduct, I think, could create conflict with an existing code of ethics. So, and we could accomplish it just by modifying the code of ethics. So was there specific, and we don't, when I say specific, I don't mean on August 20th, so-and-so did act. So we don't have to get that specific. But, you know, I have general concerns that someone plows for, plows the snow and serves on our zoning commission. And, you know, some municipalities have ordinances that say you can't be a contract vendor and a public official because we're trying to avoid the appearance of impropriety.
So the counselors can email you their concerns?
Yeah, if you want to handle it that way.
And you could look at it?
Yeah, that is fine. I would only then, just to, just to protect ourselves against any concerns under the FLOI, I would take those emails and provide them to the town manager and just include them as part of the next package. So that everyone, the public is aware of whatever was communicated to me. Because I don't think this is something that would be a privileged, this is something that should be done in a public forum. So, that's fine.
That might be easier than getting a monthly discussion firsthand.
I fully appreciate that, and I think that's fine. I mean, basically all I would be doing is taking in your comments tonight and then working-
Or we can just email the town manager.
Either way, either way.
It doesn't-
Either way, town manager and I will be getting together later in the week. So we can, if, maybe by Friday, everyone can have any comments, just to give us a meaningful period of time before your next meeting to try to bring something back to the body.
Okay.
And some of it could be just clarification, whether what is a conflict of interest? What we deem as a conflict of interest?
Let me, let me just say that there is no right or wrong when you're dealing this. It's, ethics tend to be perspective, you know? What is your perspective and, you know, and then there should be a baseline, we hope. But if you have any concerns, regardless of how you perceive those concerns, just let me know. And as I say, there are no, there are no foolish statements.
I missed it in your statement here. What was, so where were we with the code of conduct?
That, not to have the conflict, a code of conduct to stand alone when you have a code of ethics. You know, so the concept was a code of conduct as an ordinance, you know, to address specific things. But the code of ethics, the ethics code tends to address most of those concerns, like conduct.
Now, do other towns have codes of conduct for like elected officials or?
They're generally, the vernacular is an ethics code.
So it's part of their ethics?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So it would not be a standalone to say, this is a code of conduct. It would be part of the ethics code.
I mean, from what I read in our current code of ethics, in there, it has more to do with financial gain. It has more to do with financial and not with-
Behavior.
Behavior.
Well, right, and look-
Or words, you know, actions.
For those of us who are lawyers, we know, you know, our code of ethics addresses both financial and behavioral. So I don't think there's anything improper about having your code of ethics go beyond the financial. You want, I would think it's best practice to have one location where someone can be in- so, for example, you're newly elected, here's our code of ethics. It has everything there, as opposed to, here's our code of ethics, here's our code of conduct, here's our charter, and here's our, you know, all the ordinances you should become familiar with. It becomes, you want to keep this as simple as possible so that the layperson knows where to look and you're not making it too confusing for people. So-
All in one envelope, basically.
I mean, that makes sense.
If you can fit it in an envelope. I don't know, we'll see what-
I mean, but part of it too is we have, we, you know, as even the government of the town, have to be aware of the perception or what the citizens may be perceiving as being. I mean, that has to be, that, I would assume that it needs to be taken into account.
And, and once I hear your concerns, you know, we don't, we're not reinventing wheels here. You know, we have a state code of ethics, we, there's your existing code of ethics, there are surrounding municipalities' code of ethics. So once I understand what the concerns are, then we can start to advance the program.
Anything else? Next is review of bid response for Connecticut Real Estate Broker Services. Yeah, that bid came in, there's a memo from Michelle Knockwood. There were zero responses to that in the conversation she had.
Exactly what Counselor Fawnin said would have.
Yes, Joe, you were right on the money.
Where some of us thought we should list it and more thought we shouldn't, so.
So that, I don't know where you want to go with that. But maybe, maybe now is the time that I could actually tell you about one of the properties, the Auger House. There has been, Carrie was approached by Representative the Land Trust. So they have an interest in potentially using some of that space at the Auger House, potentially. Which I think, in talking with Carrie, sounds like it might be a good, good fit. But obviously, subject to that, we, you know, subject to the council's approval. But we're going to continue to have that dialogue and see if, and explore grants. So I think there were some grants that Carrie was able to pull out that Carol Webb had done back in 2010, I believe. So we're going to go back to see and identify that grant, see if it's still available, see if it still exists, and look at other potential grants that maybe there's some money because of its historic nature that could be obtained for the rehab of that building and put an organization like that to share with maybe another organization. They don't need the whole space, they just need a little space for meeting space. And it probably makes a lot of sense as a thriving and growing organization that then they're in there reusing it and we have a practical reuse with some other organization. But anyway, since it's just in the early stages, but I am meeting with them, talking with Carrie, or Carrie's meeting with them, we met with them, talked, went to the Auger House, kind of showed it around and just to show them the space. But unless you think it's a terrible idea, I'd like to pursue it and see where it goes. See if there's any money out there, we can, we can do something for it.
Did you sign the contract with our part-time grant writer who could perhaps also look for grants for that?
I did sign it, talked to her. We're actually scheduled to have a conference call on Thursday to look at opportunities.
So she might be able to help with that?
Potentially, yeah.
She doesn't look for grants. He finds the grant and then she writes it.
Well, she's the writer, she's the writer, but-
She doesn't look at all, I thought that, I would want to make sure she do it.
Yeah, she'll do a free one-hour, you know, review.
I thought the free one-hour was her looking for grants.
Oh, baby.
Yeah, it said, it said it in the, in the paperwork.
Yeah, essentially, she's, she's the grant writer and, but knowing her, she's talked about, you know, working in Connecticut and would have, could hopefully volunteer some information on previous towns or other towns and other grants that she's worked on. And as you know, I mean, a lot of, a lot of these grants have dried up, they're just not funded anymore. So, you know, it's, trying to hunt it down is probably the hardest thing to do.
So what was the, this item, review of bid responses from, because this must have been-
Well, we put out a bid, it's RFP number four, you know, 217, that went out looking for realtors who would be interested in selling or marketing properties, town-owned property, but there were not specific properties listed. So no one would give a bid on it, not knowing what, you know? Is it 1599? Is it 190 Forest Road? Is it?
So let's put it on our next agenda.
It did.
Town-owned properties, and we'll go down the list of what we want to sell and, or what we want to-
We should get a list of-
Get a list of all the properties that we own and see if we want to sell some.
And we've got the old administration building, you know, that's there. We got the Auger House that's sitting there, yeah.
I mean, there was always talk, I know whether Brandy used it to sink with property. Is that, that like, we want to keep that now?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, they're using it quite a bit. We'd have to sort of talk to Brandy because-
Because back, you know, years ago, that was considered one of our best industrial pieces of property to get rid of.
I'm not familiar with that.
On the North Haven line, Route 17.
Is it out near?
Beach Trap, off Cinderiz.
Near, where Capasso is?
Yeah, exactly, just behind it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. But if we look at, you know, put it on our agenda for all the properties we have, we can go down and say, yeah, we want to sell it, Brandy doesn't want to sell it.
And next item, citizen statements.
Before we move on, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to add 13C. And it should be brief. And if it, if we think it's going to take longer than it should, we can put it on the next agenda. But I want to make it for discussion and possible action on legal opinions.
In general?
In general.
Okay.
Second for discussion.
So, under the discussion, so a little history.
Well, we have to, so you made a motion, I'll second it, to add it to the agenda, or did Anthony?
He seconded it.
Oh.
Anthony seconded it.
Oh, okay.
For discussion.
So I didn't know if you wanted me to discuss why before we vote, or just we'll vote on it and?
No, we'll just vote on it.
To put it, this is just to amend the agenda, to put it on.
Okay.
Mayor Dooty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Antoni Looney?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Bruce?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampanna?
Yes.
Okay, now we're, we're at discussions of possible legal action, or discussion, possible action.
Okay. So, so pay attention here. Hold on, let me find my notepad. So, years back, the legal opinions were, were kept, I believe, I believe, and, you know, don't quote me on any of this, I believe they were kept by the town clerk. And when Frank Connolly came to town, he didn't like that idea. So he decided that the town attorney's written opinions would be in a folder in the town manager's office. So my concern is this, I actually asked Michael to find me a legal opinion. And, so this is a two-part thing. Number one, how do we get a written legal opinion? Number two, who can ask for the written legal opinion? And number three, if the town of North Branford's taxpayers paid for this legal opinion, it ought to be filed with the town clerk. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. Because we got a written legal opinion a couple of years ago that I thought was a written legal opinion, but to my dismay, I found out that it wasn't asked for properly. So Michael knew nothing about having it and, you know, you can, you'll get your chance after. But, and, and I, so the town clerk actually explained to me that because it wasn't asked for on the council floor by the- that because it wasn't asked for on the council floor by the town council, it just, it didn't go through the proper channels, so it never was handed to Michael to put in a file, which he may or may not have. And then he told me that John Jesman kept a lot of his files. And so again, I'm thinking here, this is way too complicated. We paid for this opinion, if it's a written legal opinion, why is it not filed at the town clerk's office? So anybody can chime in that disagrees, agrees, or-
I, I, no, I, I, I'll start, I guess, in terms of legal opinion, it makes perfect sense. I mean, I don't know the whole history or where it broke down from, from various managers, but, and I think, I don't think Lisa would disagree, but, yeah, there ought to be a, a full record retention and deposition, I mean, or deposit, kept here in a, in a safe environment, in one of the vaults. And I think we have in, in the other vault, we have two vaults here, so I don't disagree with that, and, yeah, that's-
And my, my thought, and I'm just trying to look quick to see if I can find a statute, but in another town that I represent, the town clerk actually came to me and said, oh, I ju, I didn't realize, I actually, I'm staturally obligated to maintain real legal opinions. And he got this book, Town Attorney Legal Opinions, and he was like, you know, the town had never done it in its history, but had started doing it from that point forward, which was about fourteen years ago. So, I'm looking quickly under town clerks in, in this, in the statutes, I'm not seeing it. I can look, but regardless of whether or not there's statutory provision, it's probably good practice to keep it there for all the reasons already. I, I see no, no objection to the maintenance of it at, by the town clerk, providing it is not an opinion that would otherwise be a privileged opinion. Meaning if it's something that is within executive session, that an opinion is being provided for, I can see an exclusion because it's something that's not intended for public consumption. But all other legal opinions that are, are public, I have no, no, I see no reason why they should not be maintained.
So is there a specific format as to how to get a legal opinion? As Al, you know, like whatever this example was that it didn't follow the protocol?
Yeah, well, the short answer is, it depends, right? Because, because when, how old is it? When was it? Who issued it? Is the lawyer still-
I mean, going forward, is there, is there a specific format?
Well, how, if-
How does it go about?
If anyone on this body wanted a legal opinion, how, that's really, I think, up to the administration on, you know, and I serve at, at the will of the administration. So it's not for me to say how someone should be obtaining a legal opinion. It's for me to be giving a legal opinion that is properly requested, so-
So how do we properly request?
I think, I think every legal opinion we ask for before, as far as I can remember, we ask for on the council floor, and we ask the town attorney to give us an opinion on it.
Right, and that's, so that's what I'm thinking, that we normally-
That's in the record, that's in your voice record, that's in the record, vote here, whatever else, minutes.
Yes, there's always a cost to it. So I think that, yeah, I think that probably a vote of the council should ask for a legal opinion, a written legal opinion.
Well, I don't know if you need a vote of the council, but as long as you could do it on the council floor, at a meeting, you know, I don't think you need five people to, you know, say, yes, I want this legal opinion, and four people say, I don't think we need it.
Right, okay.
And I think if a counselor requests it, and, you know, we all go along with it. You know, you may get some objections, but I don't think you actually need a vote.
There should be a vote. The town charter requires the town council to act as a body. So if one person asks for an opinion, and that's going to saddle the town with a costly expense, why wouldn't the entire council have a voice in that?
I, so I tend to agree.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, like, can, because otherwise, any, any one of us might be able to email for one.
But you're doing it on the floor of the council, you're doing it as a body itself. And I'm sure if I ask, if I ask, I ask for a legal opinion on something, you know, I don't think, actually, we need a vote on it, but-
Well, let's assume I make that request, and the rest of you think it's a frivolous request. Why should Vinnie waste his time, why should he now get billed?
No, he, he's not going to go along with it, if that, if that's the case.
Well, but it came from the council floor, is what, is what Joe's saying.
Yeah, so why not put it up to a vote?
You can do that.
And if it's, whatever the number is, but comes out five-four, that it's not something appropriate for opinion, doesn't happen.
Yeah.
I think that avoids the potential for abusing requesting opinions.
Right.
Plus, you'd have something formal in the minutes.
Right.
You'd be able to report.
I would assume Michelle would take, take it down in the form of a motion, it would be voted on.
Versus a, you know, you know, consensus, do we have nodding of heads and, and sort of-
Well, we, we wouldn't get into the will of the board, I think.
Well, is that common, Vin?
You know, again, I hate to always say, there's no right or wrong way of conducting your business, as long as it's legal. And a legal opinion is not an action. It's a, so it's not an action of, of, you know, the, the vote of the body to get the legal opinion may justify the cost, right? Because to the extent that I, if someone were to say, give me a legal opinion on the Investment Advisory Act of nineteen forty and yada, 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 yah, you may say, Mr. Mayor, say, what do we need that for? We just asked you to review a contract, why do I need an actual ten-page legal opinion on that? And that is not the best way to spend the taxpayer's dollars. Ultimately, you know, by asking for a legal opinion, and if there's an invoice that accompanies that opinion, that's a taxpayer expense, right? So, in a, in a sense, by, by having a vote for the opinion, you're saying, all right, we agree that this is a worthwhile opinion that we're going to agree to pay for. Although, you know, it is customary, you know, and again, depending upon the body, the, the governing body of the town. You know, in a board of selectmen town, it would generally come through just the first selectman because the town attorney is appointed by the first selectman. So if the first selectman doesn't ask for the legal opinion, then the town attorney doesn't perform.
He's not getting paid.
Right? So, I would say, I would say, you know, I mean, generally speaking, there, you may have, there may be occasion for the town manager to say, Vin, I need a legal opinion on this. Do you want that to have to wait to the next town council meeting? Or do you want to have the town manager to have some discretion on when a legal opinion is required?
Well, that's what I was saying, our legal opinions haven't been abused. And, you know, I, I think to handcuff us to, to get a vote, I think that might be a little bit extraordinary.
Yeah, so I don't think requesting opinions is such an extraordinary thing that having a vote is handcuffing anybody. The other thing that occurs to me is, we've got, I don't know how many boards or commissions in this town, but inevitably, they're going to have issues that surface that require some legal advice. Do we want to make it so broad-based that the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the chairman of P and Z, can call the town attorney's office and say, tell me what X, Y, and Z mean about this, that, or the other thing? I really think there should be some control, and Al's criticism would not be, there wouldn't be a basis for Al's criticism if we did have that vote, because we'd have minutes that approve that meeting. The question would have been presented to the town attorney, so there'd be a record that it was done. And even if it didn't make it to Lisa's office by some strange reason, we would be in a position to say, well, wait a minute, that was a legal opinion, and a copy of it should go in her records and be filed. So that formality, while it may be a bit cumbersome, has a certain amount of protection in it, both to the town and to the process, that I think makes it worthwhile, but that's just-
See, my, and actually, you know, years back, I remember voting on stuff that, like the zoning, like we had to vote authority for the zoning board to get an opinion from the, from the attorney. And I, so I don't know, and maybe we don't want to do it tonight, I just brought it up because I thought it was early tonight.
It, it is kind of early in my world.
Because sometimes we, you know, we vote on things based on the town attorney's opinion, and if it's not a, if it's not a legitimate opinion, and it's not filed somewhere, then we got to pay for it again to, to get it, so, so I don't know. I think there, there, if I may, there are two concerns. Number one is, we would like to have a, a reservoir of legal opinion, town attorney legal opinions, so that there's a digest in the future that we can refer back to if, because issues tend to come up again. And why should we renew a legal opinion from scratch, where a future town attorney can pick up from a prior opinion and just run it forward from that point to see if there's been changes in the law, or if the opinion changes. Although, keep in mind that one lawyer's opinion is rare to be wholly consistent with another lawyer's opinion, even in the municipal world. So you can have competing legal opinions from competing, from different town attorneys, all right? So that, you, you don't necessarily want to handcuff a future town attorney by a prior legal opinion if that future lawyer's advice is different. So there, it should be advisory only, and not, you know, not handcuff future lawyers into postures. But there, there should be a, a, a body maintained by the town clerk of all legal opinions for reference purposes, you know.
But you're saying, actually, there's some state law or state statute somewhere, somebody told, some town clerk told you that it was their job?
Town clerks came up to me and said, I didn't realize I was supposed to be maintaining all of these, and there was this town attorney legal book that he ended up, a binder. And so every time I do a legal opinion in that, I give him a copy of it, and he puts it right behind it. So, and that's easy enough to do, and quite frankly, going forward electronically, most of your stuff is digitized in any event, so it even is easier to maintain. I mean, I actually got it from, from Lisa, that she used to have them. And then Frank Connolly felt that he should keep them. And so ever since Frank's decision to keep them, took it away from Lisa, they've been filed down in the town manager's office, possibly.
So what would be the downside of voting on a legal opinion? Because I, I would think that, you know, we're supposed to be operating as, as nine.
Personally, I have no, no, I take no issue with, I don't think it would be wise to say, anyone can ask for a legal opinion. I think that either it should be a conduit through the mayor, or the town manager, or the both, or through a vote of the body, right? Because ultimately, if your legal budget skyrockets because fifty people are asking for legal opinions, and I'm under the advisement that I should provide legal opinions to everyone, then when you get your bill, I don't want to be, well, you all don't want to pay your bill, right? So, from that perspective. I would caution a little bit with, when you get into zoning or wetlands issues, because from a timing standpoint, they're under specific statutory timelines. If, if it's a legal opinion with respect to pending application, or something like that, where they may not be able to wait for this, the body to act, because they have to open a hearing or close a hearing within a specific statutory timeframe. And so it may be impracticable for them to refer a question to this body, can we ask the town attorney to follow it? And it also, it may be something that may, let's assume it relates to a land use appeal or something like that, where it may be privileged. And technically, they're a separate legal body, even though they're within the confines of the town. And if there isn't, I, I haven't seen a, a legal bu, a legal budget with respect to the land use, but you can address the concerns by establishing, through the budget process, to say, we are going to budget X to the land use agent, agencies for legal. And that will cover their lawsuits as well as their legal opinions. You could, you could address it that way. So you're controlling the issue, but you're controlling it financially, as opposed to controlling it by the issue. Because how are, you're going to supplement your, they were, they're in charge of a specific topic, and, or you're going to supplement your discretion for theirs on a specific issue that you may not be familiar with. See, I don't want to, you know, and my intent wasn't to make a big deal out of this. My intent was, they ought to be, the townspeople paid for it, they ought to be filed with the town clerk. How we, how we ask for it is-
Well, in, in, so you, you mentioned, Vin, in an executive session-type legal opinion. How, how, where and how would that be filed?
It wouldn't be, basically, I, I, if it's executive session, or if it's privileged, I, at the top of it, would say attorney-client privileged, potentially attorney-work product, not for public disclosure. And so that way, you would, you would know that what I'm giving you is meant for only me and this body.
Right, so we've, we've done that where they've been handed out, and we've handed them back in at the end of executive session.
But like, what I, what I was referring to was, three years down the road, we were in a, in a similar discussion, and we wanted to reference that, that no longer exists?
Well, I don't necessarily feel, look, the, the privilege is not the lawyer's, it's the client's. So I don't feel I have to, unless there's a overwhelming desire, I don't feel I have to retrieve what I've handed you, because if you decide you want to breach the privilege, that's, the client's right, it's not the lawyer's right, right? So if you want to take that home and put it into your vault-
Okay, that's all I was asking, okay, that's fine.
You know, that's fine, if you want to maintain a privileged log with the town manager's office, so that there's privileged opinions, maybe with the town manager, so, you know, he's the conduit for-
Because if it was a privileged thing, the town clerk, if once she touches, he or she touches it, it's public.
Right.
But if it was privileged, the town managers could, they could have a privileged book of opinions.
Yeah, I mean, arguably, the town clerk, just because they're the, they're receptacle for all public documents, doesn't mean they can't maintain privileged information. But if you want to have an abundance of caution, I think the appropriate place would be the town manager's office for privileged opinions.
So I don't know that we need to fix how we, how we ask for them, but, you know, I, I have no problem either way, whether we had a, whether it's a vote of this board for this board's questions, or, or whether the mayor can, you know, whether council members-
Well, how is it done in the past, Al? Like, for instance, like, what was brought up, like, planning and zoning, if they needed legal-
They went through the town manager.
Right, and then I think, I think that the zoning, we, the ones I remember, the zoning board wanted something, and it came here. But if the zoning, and if the zoning, if the paid administrators wanted it, they, they could ask for an opinion, or go through you, I guess, to get an opinion.
That must have been a long time ago, because I don't remember that.
I was here before you were. I was here before Frank Connolly, when we used to have these things filed.
Well, I have no problem filing them, I, I just don't think we should handcuff too many people trying to get an opinion, especially a timely opinion.
I mean, do you want to put that town counselors can ask for an opinion, but then they're going to have to be handed out to the town coun, whole council?
I think that, like, if we ask Mike a question now, he, he sends it out to everybody. If one member has a question, they send, he sends it out to everybody. So we all know what question's being asked.
But, again, just-
But, I mean, not, not many of us have ever stood up here and said, I want a legal opinion, you know? And I think Michael understands that that's not abused, you know, and to vote on something like that.
See, this wouldn't have, this, you know, this wouldn't have come up if I didn't, I went looking for an opinion that we actually voted on something based on this opinion, and for me to find out that it wasn't a legitimate opinion.
Well, if you want to make a motion to have all legal opinions filed with the town clerk, you know.
Right, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion that all-
I'll be happy to go along with that.
All written legal opinions that aren't privileged, information or aren't, be filed with the town clerk, and then we can be done with it.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Big Leone?
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
I have a, I have a question. If I needed a legal opinion on something, how about if I went to either Mike, who's the mayor, or a town manager? Presented them with the question, let them decide whether you should be involved.
I, I was going to work-
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I was going to recommend, and again, anyone could be in the minority at any time. So, this is not, I don't mean to direct this at the existing minority, because two years, it could swap. But, yeah, I don't, I don't, as a lawyer, I don't want to be in a position where I'm in between a political volleyball, uh, meaning that if a member, if, if it was any counselor could ask for an opinion directly to the town attorney, and a member of the minority party were to say, I want an opinion on this, which kind of flew in the face of what the majority was thinking or doing, you're potentially putting your town attorney in a difficult posture, right? Because you're all my clients, the town is my client at the end of the day. Uh, and, uh, I think it would be best practice for it to either come through the mayor's office or the town manager's office, uh, so that the town attorney is not in the position of having to decide who he or she should be listening to. You know, because at the end of the day, we're here to serve a legal purpose, not a political purpose, right? And that's, that would be my only request for myself, because I don't want to be in a position where I am uh, be, while I appreciate even as a municipal lawyer, I live in a political world, uh, I don't like to be a political player.
And I'd be fine with that, providing the town manager sent it out to all nine of us, said, hey, the mayor presented me with this question, and we're going to board it to the town attorney for them to be answered.
I think there's a wealth of knowledge on this council that probably can answer most of those questions before it even gets to that stage.
I agree. We don't abuse, we don't abuse it. Like I said, I was just, you know, we, this bit of them not being on file was bothering me.
Well, now they're, they'll be, so.
Right.
So, we solved a major step.
We did.
All right, next item, the citizen statements and petitions.
I'd just like to address Deputy Mayor Angeloni's comment about the contingency. You're right, there was usually a hundred and twenty-five dollar, thousand dollars the base. Uh, we added two hundred thousand dollars a share proposal to potentially go to Branford, nine-one-one. And we also add, we transferred a hundred and fifty thousand out of health insurance into contingency in case we went with the state plan. So, the one fifty will have to move back to the health insurance line, so the two hundred thousand is basically all your, your delta of free money, if you will. The total is four seventy-six, you're, you're right. One twenty-five with the base, two hundred for Branford, one fifty for potential healthcare shift. We moved out of the health line and put in contingency in case we moved, but we didn't move, so that'll go back. Got a question at your desk. Also, there was a question last month, or last, yeah, last month, about the miscellaneous revenue, uh, the ninety thousand dollars, first and ten thousand dollar budget. There's basically three items in that, in that line that jump out at you. Uh, the first thirty-two thousand dollars is a worker's comp premium refund from the fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. Uh, pretty straightforward. The second is forty-eight thousand, seven fifty. That goes towards a, um, Reliance Insurance Company was our insurance company back in nineteen ninety-five. We had a dog bite case. Uh, we made kind of municipal law on that, where a, one of our volunteer firemen, who wasn't really a member of the volunteer fire department at the time, was at a state fireman's convention, and his dog bit a girl, bit her nose off, basically. And she sued, and our insurance company went belly up. So, the town wrote a check for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars out of our pocket. And we've gotten two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of it back. We could probably get the whole, all money of it back. It's just taking, taking some time. Uh, and the third piece is a foreclosure, uh, net about ninety-five hundred dollars of fees. Sixty-eight thousand came from the foreclosure, and we owed the tax, the tax department was owed fifty-nine thousand, so the net is ninety-four. So, those three big items make up the majority of the ninety thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more citizen statements. Uh, motion to adjourn?
Some of us.
Second. Anybody in favor?